Call this public session to order. Board Clerk Jackie Gaby is unable to attend today's board meeting. We are, we have a quorum. This meeting is being webcast, live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. I will now identify closed topic sessions. Public employee assignment, reassignment, appointment. Public employee discipline dismissal, release complaints. Conference with labor negotiator. Conference with legal counsel, existing lit. Conference with real property negotiators. And anticipated lit. 1.5, public comment on closed session topics. General public comment on any closed session item will be heard at this time. Pursuant to board policy, the board may limit individual comments to no more than three minutes and individual topics to 20 minutes. It is recommended that you begin your comment by stating your name. No public comment. 1.6, we will now adjourn to closed session. I'd like to call, uh, reconvene to our regular session. 3.2, introduction of interpreter. Gus Mora will speak on Spanish interpreter for this meeting. As the Spanish interpreter for this meeting. Meeting attendees who would like to listen to the Spanish interpretation in the meeting, please pick up headphones from the table located in the back of this meeting room. This announcement, this announcement will now be shared in Spanish.
Gus Mora servirá como intérprete en español para esta reunión. Invitamos a los asistentes de la reunión que deseen escuchar la interpretación en español. Ahí por audífonos, al menos ubicado al fondo de esta sala de reuniones.
Thank you. 3.3, meeting announcement. This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Members of the public wanting to provide public comment on items listed on tonight's agenda. We recommend you fill out the public comment form. Green form located on the table of the back of this room. Please hand the completed form to Delia Smart, board manager, before the item comes up on the agenda. We recommend you complete a separate form for each agenda item you'd like to comment on. Ms. Smart is sitting at the table in the back of the meeting room. Members of the public providing public comment, please use the microphone on the stand located in front of the room. 3.4, I will now lead you in the pledge of allegiance. 3.5, there was no action taken in closed session. 3.6, revision to item enclosures and adoption of board meeting agenda. There are revisions. Item enclosures for agenda items number 5.11 and 5.12. May I have a motion to adopt the board of meeting agenda?
A motion.
On a motion, okay.
I'll second.
Okay, on a motion by board member Case Spear Saleno, second by board member, um, Vegas. All in favor? That's six yays and one absent. Number four. General public comment. General public comment on any school related topic may be heard at this time. The board asks that any public comment on an item listed on tonight's agenda be addressed at the time the item comes up for discussion by the board. To comply with the Brown Act, California's open public meeting law, board discussion is limited to items on the agenda. Therefore, when receiving public items for items not on the agenda, the board's role is to limit to receiving such comments and the board may not engage in dialogue with the public. The board thanks the public for its participation in public comment and understanding of the board's responsibility. Pursuant to board policy, the board may limit individual comments to no more than three minutes and individual topics to 20 minutes. It is recommended you to begin your comment by stating your name. And we have public comment, Crystal Reynolds.
Good evening, Assistant Superintendent Mark Thompson and board. I am here tonight to present a copy for all of our board members tonight of a public records request. I have been looking at some books that are within our libraries. I know June 1st, we had the governor that came in and kind of threatened our librarians and superintendents with some legal action or fines if, um, we start pulling books. But I have to tell you, I have about 19 books and counting right now that I am highly concerned about that are in our libraries right now for high school and junior high. Not only that, what I worry about too is a lot of these books, the reading levels. Now, even if they're not in junior high or high school, their reading levels, most of them are fourth grade. The youngest ones I saw was a 3.9, which is third grade, ninth month. The one younger than that was second grade, fourth month. And these are highly sexually explicit books. The excerpts, I mean, I'm going to tell you, I couldn't read the entire books that would take a lot of time, but the expert or excerpts that I found are highly disturbing. I would say pretty much pornographic in detail in the way that they're describing acts. And it's, it's everything. I can't even tell you everything in detail right now, but it's, there's a lot in there. And so tonight I'm asking for a little bit of information so I can do a little bit more research. I want to let you know, I'm not one for banning books. I think that we need to have different representations of culture, but I'm going to tell you, this is different. You guys need to see these books for yourselves. I have a listing here so you guys can see the ones I'm talking about right now. So you can start your own research. The next boarding meeting, I actually planned to have copies. That's why I couldn't get it all done tonight. It's a lot of copies for each and every one of you, but I plan to have copies for all of you guys at the next board meeting so you guys can see what I'm talking about. I personally went to a couple of other friends and people just in the community, just kind of get their input to make sure I'm not being a prude about this, make sure I'm not overthinking this, and they were highly disgusted. It's, it's pretty bad. So I'm going to leave this with you guys tonight. I'm going to leave it with Delia. And again, there's about 19 books on there. There's actually more, um, that I'm finding that are in the libraries, but I just don't have any more of the information like the, I'm still researching, um, the excerpts and all that. So I'll leave this with you guys tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Item five, consent agenda. Would any board member, would any board member like to pull an item from the consent agenda? Okay, may I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, on a motion by board member Belt, second by.
Oh, oh, wait.
Did I skip something? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't get a green sheet. I'm sorry, Greg. Oh. Well, usually you don't, but I usually have that. That's a come I skipped over you. I'm sorry. We will go back. Mr. Price, sorry about that.
This is more a question and maybe a point of order because normally, normally the, this is Greg Price for the Teachers Association. Normally things are done in consent item and we don't get a chance to talk about them. So I have a question about 5.24 in the items. And specifically one point to this before it's approved. This is the dual enrollment agreement with COS. So I have talked with superintendents in the past and our current superintendent, and we have talked about how our teachers always have priority to teach classes. 2B dot four says, "The high school district understands that some COS faculty have seniority, therefore have priority to teach, to be assigned to courses. Therefore, COS faculty may utilize their seniority status and assigned to a course at the high school despite the high school having a qualified dual enrollment instructor." This is in direct conflict with what I've been told over and over again. So I'm going to ask the board that they pull this item and reexamine that. That is not what I've been told in the past. And that, that's an issue. So that is the comment that I have for the board tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. I will say currently I have no understanding of us having that currently happening in our district as we have the teachers that are teaching these courses or teachers at the high school sites. But, so that's what, that's what our current practice is right now. But I understand your concern with what's written there.
Okay. So. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Yes, I'll move, we accept a consent agenda.
Can I ask a question? Do we, is, is this item that Mr. Price is talking about, is it something that if we don't approve it tonight, it's going to substantially push, push back just because it's the beginning of the school year? Or is it something that we should bring back at the next meeting? Or is it something that if we don't approve it tonight?
I'm going to have Mrs. Phillips, Administrator of Teaching and Learning, can dress up.
With the school year starting very quickly, uh, we do need to have this move forward. Currently within our district, um, we don't, fashion design and merchandising would be the only dual enrollment course that we don't have a credential teacher onsite teaching. And so we would have a COS teacher on campus, um, teaching that. Otherwise, um, all courses are dual enrollment currently staffed by our COS teachers, or I'm sorry, by our VUSD teachers that do meet our requirements for COS. So, but as we build additional programs, we are actually working towards, um, working on obtaining more teachers with the correct master's degrees in order to meet the qualifications to teach additional dual enrollment courses as we grow dual enrollment in VUSD.
Yeah, go ahead.
So just, just to clarify, we are, the first priority is to our own teachers.
Correct.
To teach those dual enrollment classes. And if we don't have a teacher with the correct credential, then we would go to COS for their teacher. That would be the, the backup plan.
Correct. The MOU, however, does state that it could supersede, but VUSD's intent is to offer courses that we have the teachers in order to teach those courses.
If I can chime in as someone in kind of these dual roles, um, I understand the language in the contract as a COS Costa faculty member and union member there. I can tell you that in all my experience, in terms of, you know, professors who are there who have seniority, pick their classes first, their base load, and then they go in order of seniority. And then if folks want to do overload, then they go like, you know, in that same order. Uh, I've never heard of, um, and you know, uh, anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, but I've never heard of a COS faculty member sort of superseding and choosing that high school course because typically, A, they, they don't want to teach it because it may be far from where they live, et cetera. But more than likely, B, they know that a high school faculty member is there and is, you know, fully qualified to teach that course. So though the language there exists, I haven't heard of any instances in which that has happened in which a COS professor has taken a class sort of designated for a high school dual enrollment teacher. However, I do understand the concerns of Mr. Price and I think, you know, that is something maybe, uh, we can, you know, partner with, uh, moving forward as we continue to look at expanding dual enrollment, um, of course offerings throughout our district. But yeah, as of the timeline and given, I would, you know, fully support and back this because I wouldn't want any student not to have access to their course this fall semester.
I'd like to add just one edit. Our medical terminology class is also taught by a COS teacher as we don't have the correct credential teacher, um, or I'm sorry, master teacher, um, for that position. And then our fashion design is an online course.
Okay. And is that, oh, go ahead. You go first.
Yeah, just real quick. So it sounds like we don't have an issue right now. And Mr. Price, there has been a past practice of making sure that the USD teachers are selected first. It sounds like that's just the way it works because no COS teacher really wants to come out five days a week and work at a high school. But, well, other than my esteemed peer to my left, but I think it's worth, um, the board passing this tonight for efficiency sake, but going back to see if COS be willing to add language to this agreement to that effect. Because if that's what practice is and it works, why don't we try to codify it to make sure that our teachers do get first crack formally?
Yeah. And that, that's what I was going to say too. Let's, um, I think it's imperative that we approve this MOU, but let's relook at the language in the contract. So I have a motion by.
Mr. Belt.
Yes.
And second by Case Spear Saleno. All in favor? Motion carries, um, uh, six ayes, one absent. Then item six, board member reports. Dr. Vegas.
Thank you, President Gomoyen. No report, just reminding all of our students, all of our student athletes. I know Band Camp is right around the corner to stay hydrated in this weather and stay cool.
Okay, Dr. Otto.
No report.
Mr. Belt.
Enjoyed myself a couple of weeks of vacationing in the forest and found teachers all over the north coast of California. My wife and I had a lot of fun of actually sharing ideas and I, and commiserating as well, and looking for, uh, the future of education becoming brighter and brighter in California.
Case Spear, Ms. Case Spear Saleno.
I just wanted to say that I won't be here at the next meeting for sure, probably not the next two. My daughter is having surgery. It's going to require me to be there for her. So I don't want, you know, anyone to think that there's some other reason I'm not here. I've tried to be at every meeting I, I could possibly be at, uh, unless, you know, there's an illness or something like this in the family. But because I will be missing the next two meetings, I just wanted to send, um, good vibes to all of our teachers and staff and everyone returning at the beginning of the school year. Um, I hope you have a wonderful first day, um, and all the, the good back to school shopping for parents that gets to happen in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Board member Naylor.
No report. I was able to celebrate with our communications team at the National School Public Relations Conference, and I just want to give them kudos because they did win 15 national awards for their body of work that they've done in less than a year. So I just wanted to say congratulations to them. Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, thank you. Just a quick report. First of all, I just want to reiterate as well, it's hot out there. So stay safe, um, out there right now, but also know that our staff is working diligently here at the district office, teachers, admin, uh, to prepare for our first day of school. That will be here before we know it, August 10th. Now, we have several trainings coming up next week when we have our next board meeting. We'll be sharing our back to school, getting ready, getting prepped and preparing families for that. So working hard on that. Also, you'll notice up here, we did have this room painted. We don't have our logo up as of this time, but we do have a new logo that will be coming up. And so that's why that is not there at this time. And, um, you know, students, I just, if you hear me, um, you got a few weeks before school comes. I encourage you still at this time to engage in a good book, engage with your parents, visit, talk, interact, go see things, learn, grow. You don't just learn in school, you learn everywhere that you're at. So each and every day, I encourage you to do that and be ready to come back to school on that first day. We'll be ready for you.
Thank you. 8.1, public hearing resolution adopting school facility need analysis, alternative facility fees and, um, SEQA exemption. I will now open this public hearing. Presenters are Chief Business Officer Nathan Hernandez and Chief Operation Officer Eric Kerr.
Good evening, President Gomoyen, members of the school board, Mr. Thompson. Tonight we have the resolution for adoption of the level two developer fees. Back in March, the board authorized the, uh, school facility needs analysis, the study that was performed by Mr. Ken Reynolds and Schoolworks. And so he's going to share a little bit more about what that needs analysis details as well as the results. Um, and then we'll talk about some district needs as well as our process to get here. And then we'll ask for the board to, uh, open the public hearing.
Good evening. It's wonderful to be with you here in person tonight. We do have a quick presentation to give you a quick, high level overview of the work that we've completed. And so we always like to start off by talking about some developer fee basics and, of course, developer fees are a fee charged to, uh, construction projects for, to help with school facility projects due to their impacts. And so many districts throughout the state do collect level one fees, which we are currently collecting. And that rate is $4.79 per square foot for new residential projects and 78 cents per square foot for any commercial or industrial projects. And then some districts like yours are looking at charging level two fees. So it is a higher level than the standard level one. And it is based on what the cost is or 50% of the cost is to accommodate the impact of the new students being generated by new development. And level two only applies to the residential. There's no impact on the commercial projects. So in order to charge level two fees, since they are a larger amount than the level ones, there are some prerequisites. And so you're required to meet two of the four prerequisites. The, the requirements are either to have 20% of your classrooms are portables as compared to permanent, uh, construction. And so we meet that with a 25.3% in our inventory. The second bullet is a 30% of our elementary students in multi-track year round programs. I know we used to do that a long, long time ago, uh, but that's not very common anymore. The next item is you're looking at your capital facility debt. If we need to have a ratio of our debt to your bonding capacity of 15% and your current number was at 32%, so we meet that requirement. And then the fourth item is having placed a local bond on the ballot and had at least a 50% yes vote within last four years. And so measure A was in 2018, so we're just beyond that four year window for that bond. So we do meet the two of the four requirements. So after that, then we have to go through the process of calculating what your level two fee amount is. And of course, there's a lot of legal requirements. We look at a lot of data. And so some of the major components that impact the level of that fee are what size homes are being built. And that's broken down into both, uh, new single family homes along with the multifamily housing units. And so we're just over 2,000 square feet on average in our single family units and just over 1,000 square feet on the average multifamily unit that's been built in the last five years. Local land costs are a big factor on what you see for level two fee amounts. So if you look at districts like on the coastal areas where land is more expensive, they typically have higher level two fees. And then the next item, we look at the student yield rate. Districts with a higher student yield rate typically can justify a larger level two fee than those with smaller yield rates. The old rate is calculated by looking at the new housing units that have been built over the last five years. And that analysis for your district comes out to 0.383 students per home on average. Of course, that's a relatively low number. Back in the day, uh, we would anticipate when there's new developments coming around and we'd average 0.7 students per home on average for a unified school district. So we can see yield rates have dropped and we've seen a strong correlation between housing prices as they've increased and yield rates dropping, uh, lately in our state. The next line is looking at the space available. And this is where we've had some interaction with the BIA. Our calculation of space available is done by comparing your current enrollment to your school's capacity. And our analysis shows that there's actually 89 seats extra that you have in comparison to your current enrollment. And so we are showing that as space available. So out of all the students generated by the housing, we subtract 89 before we calculate what are the cost impacts to your district. Their methodology, they were saying there's actually plenty of seats available at your elementary schools, so we shouldn't count any of the elementary students generated by development. And so they're, they're, they're dissecting the data into more detailed levels and making the argument that the district should not be able to charge for existing deficiencies. And that is part of the law, right? We can't charge the developers for existing deficiencies in the district, but that's taken on a more broad scale. So for example, if our capacity was less than our current enrollment, right? We'd have existing unhoused students. And so no matter how many students we generate from development, we can only use those students generated from development. We can't add to that the existing unhoused students who are asking them to pay for level two fees. So again, that's my belief along with the attorney is that there's a different interpretation of that point of law. And then finally, if there's any local funds available, that's reduced from the calculations that we do on what's the cost impact. And so the bottom line is we've calculated your level two fee to be $5.50 per square foot. Again, that's just slightly more than the current level one fees. But it is a net increase. So the next thing I like to do is really highlight what is the real impact of charging level two fees. As I mentioned before, it's only impacting residential projects, not commercial or industrial. And so we do a little bit of a calculation here. In, in that second paragraph, right? The average new home, that's again, that's averaging both a single family and multifamily comes in at just around 1,600 square feet. So we're charging 550. Basically, we're asking for a fee of about $8,800. You would only be collecting about 76.50 if you were only collecting the level one rate. And so the, the impact's really about $1,100 per housing unit that is being built to help out with the true cost of housing students and all the facility needs that you'll be made very aware of, uh, both in the, at the end of our presentation and as you work on your facility master plan. And so, uh, a quick calculation, right? We, we show how many homes we expect, how many of those are single family, how many are multifamily, how many students are being generated. Again, those numbers can fluctuate. We did look at a construction weight that's the same as the values we used in our demographic study, which tries to do a very accurate look at what we truly believe will happen over the next five years. And again, based on those numbers, you'd be able to collect just over 30 million in developer fees to help with your facility needs. Of course, we'd have to come back here and do these studies every 12 months, so every year. And so, you know, showing what your income is over five years, when we don't know what is going to be justified next year, it is a little bit of a stretch, but just gives you a, a estimation of, you know, if we were to continue with this rate, what things would look at in, in the future. Next, I'd like to really cover the, how can we use our developer fees, this, in particular level two developer fees? There are different rules that apply when you collect level two fees versus just a standard level one fees. So level two is limited to basically new school projects. Uh, and of course, that includes all the different components of a new school. So the, you know, the site, the furniture, the architectural fees, site development, playgrounds, right? The, the entire campus. Next item is leased or purchased modulars or portables. Right? If you need some for interim housing until a new project is built or, you know, you need something quickly and you decide to use modulars, those types of projects can be used for the level two fees. If you're adding to an existing school, you don't always need a new school. Sometimes you just need to add a wing to an existing school. So whether you're building classrooms, cafeterias, gyms, restrooms, those additions to existing schools are a valid use of your level two fees. And of course, if you're acquiring land for a future school. And finally, COP payment. Sometimes you've already built the projects, but you're still making payments. And so that's another allowed use. And then, next, I just had a couple of statistics. And again, the reason I put this in here is the data and the calculations that we do are, are based on all the government code and education code that we require to follow. And so our, our calculation shows your capacity at 28,982, whereas in other documents, you may see different capacities. Uh, and again, there's just different. And again, there's just different methodologies used when you're calculating a capacity. And so in the state method, there were several portable classrooms that they did not include in their capacity. However, their capacity is based on the number of classrooms you had in 1998, when this current school facility program started, plus all the projects that have occurred since then. Again, it's an eligibility accounting type of methodology. And so it doesn't always line up real well with your true capacity when you look at, you know, where your teachers are actually located. In our demographic study, we found that your capacity in reality, based on the way you use your facilities, is about 33,024. One of the reasons it's higher is because you're loading more students in each classroom than the state methodology uses. And and plus, of course, you have all the portables that you're using, that the state program discounts. And so if we had actually utilized the state loading standards, right, our capacities would have been almost identical. So finally, my last slide here talks about the process. And so a level two study increases your residential rates immediately. So basically, starting tomorrow, assuming you approve the resolution, you can begin collecting the 550 per square foot. When you implement it, you have a 12-month window. So after one year, that fee goes away until a new study is performed. And then the other component, right, is, well, how come this doesn't impact our commercial or industrial fees? Those are based on a level one study only, and their next adjustment is slated for review and approval by the State Allocation Board in January of 2024. So about six months from now. And so with your approval, the fees would increase by 71 cents over your current level one rate. So again, a relatively small amount, but over time, it does help we with your overall facility needs.
Thank you, Ken. Just a couple of things I wanted to add. So our current facility needs, we know that the majority, there's lots of development in the northwest portion of the district. There's developments in the north and then the Carlton Acres, 478 acres of development. That's just west of Ridgeview, north of Rigan, between Shirk and Acres. That is planned. That is, is going to start very soon. We also know that in the northwest, we have out placements in very, very new schools. Denton and Riverway are currently at capacity and both have portables. And we are closed at both of those schools for new enrollments and transfers. So that means as new homes are built in those areas, which is where they are being built, those families who buy homes there because they see a Denton or they see a Riverway and they want to move there, will very quickly find out that their kids will be outplaced to another school because we don't have capacity because of the development there. So we're outplacing, we're outplacing families and displacing kids out of their homeschool where they could potentially go because that's why they bought their home there. The second piece is Annie Mitchell, although not in the northwest, is impacted in the southeast in the very same way. They are at capacity. We are placing students there. Another place where we have development and we have a little bit of a moving target in that we're not really sure is, is the TK enrollment. As, as we go through the universal TK rollout with the state of California, every year, we, the kids get two months younger to be eligible for TK. And so while we have, and while Ken has done a great job with those projections, we're not exactly sure. We just know that those numbers will be, will change the first day of school and we actually see the number of kids that enroll. The interesting thing about TK, just like our kindergarten classrooms, those are purpose-built classrooms. That is not a standard classroom. It's larger. It's 1,350 square feet instead of 960. It also has bathrooms and other teacher work areas that a standard classroom doesn't have. So it is a much larger lift to get those classrooms built. And it takes more planning. And so that is an impact as well in those areas where development is peaking, is increasing. And then permanent classrooms needed to replace the leased portables. Again, we've got 102 leased portables and that number is, could be slightly off because with, with 42 sites, they're literally all over the place. You saw Ken's numbers about 25.3, and that's kind of including everything that's ever been there. And so, but looking at those two most impacted northwest schools, Denton and Riverway, I mean, we all know how new Denton is. We remember in this room just a couple of years ago, when it opened at only 50-some percent. Guess what? There are no portables at Denton because they're overcapacity. And so this is the reason for going to the level two fees because we need to be able to respond to the growth in those school, in those areas where those schools are. And I think next, Nathan.
Thank you, sir. And just to kind of close out, we've sharing here the process for bringing this to the board. There's a 45-day noticing process to the city and to the county. Provided notices in 30 days and, and again, a notice in the newspaper about this sent out to some specific agencies. And as we shared with the board, we did receive response from Building Industry Association, as Mr. Reynolds shared. Provided a response to them, coordination with working with Lozano Smith and meets all of the requirements of the government code to bring this resolution forward to you today. And so adopting the level two, the fee of 550 per square foot provides the district with what is needed to provide facilities and classrooms for the growth in the areas that it's occurring and where those schools are impacted. And again, this would be implemented as of July 21st. And so with that, willing to answer any questions.
Is there any, there is one public comment, Dolores Taylor.
Here, not there? All right. Good evening, VISA Unified School District Board members. My name is Dolores Taylor. And I am a member of the, what they're referring to the B I A, which is the Builders Association of Tulare and Kings County. The only organization in the area that supports builders and their mission to build housing for the residents of the city of Visalia. But most importantly, I'm a citizen of Visalia and a very proud mother of four children. I'm also an active member of my community. As you, some of you may see me serving in many boards. Over the past year and a half, we, the B I A, have been in contact with your staff over the proposed change in the impact fees from level one to level two or three. This is a very complex process. We decided to hire an expert consultant to verify all the findings presented to the Visalia Unified School District. Upon review of the report, our consultant believes that there's no legal justification for, for switching from level one to level two. We, actually, we are quite shocked to see that as the only representative of the home builders in this area, there are two letters submitted to the staff. Providing that this change could be illegal and open the school district for potential litigation was never presented to you. I know each and every one of you believe in an open and transparent government process. So the fact that these letters were never presented to you, it is extremely worrying to me, just as a resident, as a mom of a U S D students. I would like to add these letters to the public record with their objection to this change. And I all would strongly ask that you read the letters from our consultant who believes that this is an illegal interpretation of the Leroy F Green Act and the mitigation fee act. We have not been able to sit down in a meeting in roughly over a year to discuss the issue. And we would ask that you continue this item to allow both sides to revisit the finding in the study presented by our consultant. Presented by your consultant too. I really want to thank you for your time and your service. I know what it takes to serve in the board late at night. Also had to give my little ones to be able to be here. And at the end, we all agree that the ultimate goal is what's best for our children. And I want that. I want what's best for our children. I understand the need.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor.
Okay, one more thing. And as you know, homelessness is a huge issue in our community that affects our youth, right? Attending illegal increase in rates makes the problem worse by artificially increasing housing costs.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there any board discussion or board questions?
I just want to say, I think this is a necessary step moving forward to support our students, to support our community. When I look at students at Riverway, when I look at students at Den, but when I look at students at all of our elementary and I look at the projected, you know, $30.6 million over the next few years, I think about how beneficial that could be to our district, right? And all these various projects, we're talking not just about those schools that are over-impacted, but those monies that can be used to help students in Ivanhoe, those monies that can be used to help students all across our district. And so I think this is a very necessary action. And I want to thank Mr. Reynolds, Eric, and all of our staff for working hard on this over the last year. Thank you.
Any other board comment or questions? Mrs. Naylor.
I just want to reiterate that also, you know, when we visit schools, our schools, some of them need a lot of, a lot of tender loving care. And it's obvious that we don't collect the amount of fees that we need to keep our, some of our schools up. And I look at Ivanhoe and some of those surround, outlined areas, and we owe it to our community for every student to attend a school that has all the facilities and up to date as a school that was recently built. And I just would think it would be a shame if we would neglect that.
Any other board comments? Yes, Mr. Belt.
President Gomoyan, I'd like to also add that we have the glaring need, even though it's not like our enrollment is exploding, but it's not declining as much of the state is. And also that we're not trying to be on par with this school district, but I'm very aware that Clovis Unified, their rates are much higher. So they are, and perhaps that's the reason why homes may cost more in Clovis as well. But this is a, this is a medium increase compared to other schools that are also districts that are trying to just meet the needs of our students.
Any other board comment or questions? May I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 23-24-02, adopting the school facilities need analysis, alternative school facility fees and approval of the California Environmental Quality Act exemption.
I'll make a motion. Second.
On a motion by Board Member Villegas, second by Board Member Otto, all in favor. Motion carries, six ayes, one absent.
Thank you. Thank you.
I would like to adjourn this meeting. Thank you.